Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome everybody to the March 8th, 2021, meeting of Plymouth Township Council. At this time, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Very exciting first item on the agenda tonight. We have a swearing in of new police officer Christopher Kearns, and for that, I will hand it over to the chief.
Thank you, Mr. Monero. With the intent of filling the vacancy within our ranks, the Civil Service Commission held a written examination on November 21st, 2020. Three hundred fifty-two applicants sat for the test, the top fifty scores advancing to a physical agility assessment, and eventually an oral examination. Extensive background investigations were conducted, ultimately leading to the Civil Service Commission certifying a list of eligible probationary patrol officers on February 11th, 2021. Christopher Kearns is the number one ranked candidate on that list. Christopher Kearns, a married father of two children, was born and raised in Warwick, New York before moving to Philadelphia in 2014, and joining the Philadelphia Police Department. During his six-year law enforcement career, Chris has served in the Patrol Division, a specialized tactical unit, and a narcotics task force. He's joined here tonight by his wife Jennifer, his daughter Alana, and son Jackson. I'm happy to present Mr. Kearns to council, and I respectfully recommend that he be appointed to the position of probationary patrol officer. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And I guess we need to do a motion first, or is the, we do need to do that first? Yes, yes. Okay, so is there a, is there a motion to approve the hiring of police officer Christopher Kearns?
I make a motion to approve it.
Motion from Ms. Bramblett, I think that was the second, from Mr. Gannon. Any comments or questions from council? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor, and we will send it back then to Chief Merciades and Judge Bernhardt for our swearing in.
Your sister here, you gonna come over? Mom's gonna hold the Bible. Raise your right hand, left hand on the Bible, and you will repeat words after me. I, Christopher Kearns.
I, Christopher Kearns.
Insomniac swear.
Insomniac swear.
And I will support, obey, and defend.
And I'll support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And Plymouth Township.
And Plymouth Township.
And I will discharge the duties.
And I will discharge the duties.
Of my position with fidelity.
Of my position with fidelity.
And without consideration.
And without consideration.
To a person's race.
To a person's race.
Color.
Color.
Sex.
Sex.
Religious creed.
Religious creed.
Sexual orientation.
Sexual orientation.
Age.
Age.
National origin.
National origin.
Ancestry.
Ancestry.
Handicap.
Handicap.
Or disability.
Or disability.
Congratulations. Welcome to the best police department of Montgomery County, Pennsylvania.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations, buddy.
Congratulations. Glad to have you with us.
That might have been the biggest Zoom applause we've had on our Zoom meetings all year. That was impressive. Chief, do you have anything additional?
I believe that we have a fire police officer that is to be sworn in.
I guess, before we get to that, just again, Officer Kearns, congratulations. Welcome to Plymouth Township. Welcome to the family. We really look forward to following you and your success here in your career, and we're glad that, you know, I'm sure you're glad that we chose you, but we're also really glad that you chose us. So congratulations and welcome.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Glad to be here.
All right. So our next item is a swearing in of a new fire police officer. Kimberly McCarty. Judge Bernhardt, I think I get to do this one.
You know what? I didn't know that there was a second swearing in until my mail came today. But yes, I will gladly turn over. You're better looking, and I think I like blue suits, so I do have blue suits. All right. Oh, thank you. Good luck to you. Mr. Monero is gonna swear you in. He's a younger, better-looking man.
All right, Mr. Monero, we're all set.
Okay. At this time, we will swear in Kimberly McCarty with the position of fire police officer. And Ms. McCarty, if you could just please repeat after me. I, Kimberly McCarty.
I, Kimberly McCarty.
Having been duly appointed to the Office of Fire Police.
Have been duly appointed to the Office of Fire Police.
In and for the township of Plymouth, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania.
In and for the township of Plymouth, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania.
Do swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States.
Do swear that I will support and obey the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And that I will perform the duties of the above-mentioned office with all fidelity.
And that I will perform the duties of the above-mentioned office with all fidelity.
Congratulations, Ms. McCarty.
Thank you.
So I will add a sworn and subscribe to before me on this eighth day of March, 2021. And that, that's not a vote, correct? That's just a swear. Just making sure, just making sure. All right. Thank you very much. Congratulations, and again, thank you, and also thank you for your willingness to serve the township.
Thank you very much.
And just a general reminder here as we move throughout the procedures. At any point when we call for public comment in the meeting, we do ask that anybody in the audience who wishes to offer comment, use the raise hand button, which is located at the bottom of the participants' window, and when we see your hand up, we will try our best to call on you in the order in which your hand is raised. And again, we will have public comment for every item that we discuss on the agenda. To begin with, is there any general public comment on the agenda to start? Seeing none, an announcement that an executive session was held on March 1st, 2021. At this time, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the workshop meeting on February 1st, 2021, and the minutes of the regular meeting on February 8th, 2021. Is there a motion?
Motion.
For Mr. Higgins, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Any comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Approval of departmental reports and bills, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Gannon, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett. Any comments or questions from council? From the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Okay, moving down to administration, we have a pretty big agenda item tonight as we're going to begin the process of authorizing our financing for our township building renovations. As most people will know, we've been discussing this at pretty extensive length for several years now, and over the course of the past year, have narrowed down our scope and identified the project description that we really need to complete here to renovate our township building and police office. There are several options we had on the table, and we really tried to choose the one that was the most fiscally responsible, but really did cover the items that are absolute musts and most necessary to upgrade and renovate at this time. So over the course of this year, as we begin that process and we begin to get started on this project, of course, the first thing we have to do is authorize our ability to pay for it. So that is on the agenda tonight, and the first item on the agenda is an authorization to proceed with financing township renovations. This is a resolution, and I'm going to hand that over to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Monero. This is a resolution to authorize proceeding with pursuing bond financing for a capital project, repealing all inconsistent resolutions or parts thereof, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. Whereas a local government unit may only borrow money through the issuance of bonds or other debt instruments pursuant to the procedures outlined in the Local Governmental Unit Debt Act 53 PACS Section 8001. And whereas Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, is considering a financing under the Debt Act that may consist of the issuance of the township's general obligation bonds to finance certain capital repairs and improvements to the township's municipal campus. And whereas the Plymouth Township Council desires that township administration, along with the appropriate finance and legal professionals, proceed to consider bond financing pending the final approval of the council and adoption of an appropriate ordinance at a future meeting. And whereas, should council approve the project at a future meeting, such approval would authorize the issuance of bonds within certain parameters pursuant to an ordinance that may, subject to further review and modification, follow the form of the ordinance attached to these resolutions as Exhibit A. Whereas council authorizes and directs the township's administration to do such things as may be necessary and appropriate to implement the intent and purposes of this resolution. Now therefore, be it resolved that council hereby authorizes the township administration to consider the project and in doing so engage the following finance and legal professionals. Obermeyer, Redman, Maxwell, and Hippel, LLP, as Finance and Bond Counsel, and PFM Financial Advisors, LLC, as the township's financial advisor. Be it further resolved that the township administration and engaged professionals may, through a limited competitive process, select and engage an underwriter to purchase the bonds as may be contemplated in the ordinance. There was a repealer clause. All resolutions or part thereof inconsistent with the provisions of this resolution are hereby repealed to the extent of the inconsistency. And there is a severability clause. If any of the provisions of this resolution is declared by a court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid or unconstitutional, such determination shall have no effect on the remaining provisions of this resolution. Effective immediately, this resolution shall become effective immediately following its legal enactment and shall remain in effect until here and after, excuse me, in effect hereafter until revised, amended, or revoked by an action of council adopted and resolved this eighth day of March, 2021 at a regular meeting of council, certified by Christopher G. Monero, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Higgins, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gannon. Comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. The next item relative, related to that, is a first consideration for a bond issue ordinance. And that one is that, Mr. Clark, are we going to hand that to Mr. Scott?
That will be Mr. Scott.
All right, Mr. Scott.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, I'm Pat Scott, a partner with the law firm of Obermeyer. We're bond counsel, and we have drafted the ordinance that's attached to Exhibit A, as Exhibit A to the resolution. It's quite long. Mr. Monero, would you like me to, how would you like me to proceed? I could read the preamble and then do a short summary, or both, or either or? How would you like me to proceed?
Yeah, I think just the preamble and then a nice concise summary of the sort of the nuts and bolts of it would be good.
Very good. And Scott Shear and Ben are on from PFM, and I understand they gave a presentation last week, and this is indeed the financing that we're pursuing. So I'll read the preamble to the ordinance. Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. An ordinance of the Plymouth Township Council, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, pursuant to the Act of the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, known as the Local Government Unit Debt Act 53 PACS Chapters 80 to 82, setting forth its intention to authorize and direct the incurring of non-electoral debt through the issuance of general obligation bonds in one or more series to be issued either together or separately on a tax-exempt basis, collectively the bonds, in a maximum aggregate principal amount of up to $18 million for the purpose of providing funds to, one, renovate the township's municipal and public works buildings, including, but not limited to, installing new roofing, waterproofing the basement of the municipal building, installing new HVAC, plumbing, lighting, and electrical services, removing and abating asbestos, and constructing renovations to incorporate ADA accessibility. And, two, to pay the costs and expenses of issuing the bonds here as here and after defined, collectively the project. Making certain findings and determinations and connections with the project, accepting a negotiated proposal for the purchase of the bonds, providing that the bonds when issued shall constitute a general obligation of the township, authorizing the designation of one or more series of the bonds as a qualified tax-exempt obligation as defined in the Internal Revenue Code, providing for the manner of execution and other provisions of the bonds, appointing a paying agent, covenanting to budget in each fiscal year when due the payments due on the bonds, pledging the full faith, credit, and taxing power of the township for the timely payment of debt service on the bonds, establishing a sinking fund and providing for payment of the bonds therfrom, directing the deposit of the proceeds of the bonds, authorizing and directing the preparation, verification, and filing of a debt statement, borrowing base certificate, and related material with the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, the Department of Community Economic Development, together with an application by the township to the approval of the occurrence of the non-electoral debt and issuance of bonds, making certain covenants respect to the bonds relating to federal tax and securities laws, authorizing and directing the execution and delivery of the bonds and other documents as may be necessary or advisable in connection with the issuance of the bonds upon the approval of DCED, and directing the proper officers and officials of the township to do all things necessary to carry out the ordinance and rescinding all inconsistent ordinances. The end. That being only the interruption to the ordinance, I'll summarize the, quickly, the salient points of it. In general.
Pat, if you could, I'm sorry, too, if you could just explain, sort of in general terms, the reasoning for needing this ordinance, and then the general overview of the ordinance itself.
You bet. So the ordinance is required by the Debt Act, which is the law that we have to pursue, proceed under in order to issue debt. And the ordinance under the Debt Act, the project must be defined in a publicly passed ordinance. It must authorize the issuance of bonds, and it has to contain certain things which, among other things, authorizes an application to DCED to incur the bonds or issue the bonds. So that's really it. The ordinance is kind of the Bible that's going to govern kind of the issuance of the bonds and what the financing project looks like, and it defines certain parameters within which the bonds must meet, and also specifically defines what the project is. So we have to kind of, once this ordinance is passed, the township has to stay within it, issue the bonds, and then finance the project with the proceeds of those bonds, and agree that, you know, that's what the money's going to be used for. So this is kind of a legal proceeding that's required by the Debt Act in order for the issuance to be valid. Does that make sense? Can I elaborate? Is anybody unclear? The, a brief summary of the provisions, and I just kind of wrote down the highlights or the important parts. They're all important, but the most important parts of the ordinance. The first is the definition of the project. The ordinance authorizes the pursuing of a project by the township that's defined as the improvement to the municipal campus and paying the cost of issuing the bonds. It authorizes the issuance of the bonds up to $18 million within certain parameters as it regards purchase price and payment and compensation to underwriters and kind of the establishment of annual debt service obligations. There is a schedule attached to the ordinance that kind of defines those parameters, and Scott and Ben can elaborate if anybody has any questions on those. It authorizes the township officials to execute documents and anything that's necessary to apply to the DCED, the Department of Community and Economic Development, to get this approved. That approval takes, you know, a month. They have council, we submit it, they review it, and then they ask some questions, and then we ultimately, it's approved, and it's on record in Harrisburg. It authorizes the issuance, well, it authorizes the appointment of an underwriter, which, as you know from the resolution, is not appointed yet. We'll huddle with PFM and determine an appropriate process to select an underwriter, but once the underwriter is selected, we'll insert that into the ordinance, and it authorizes the issuance of a bond purchase agreement whereby the township would agree that it'll sell the bonds effectively to the underwriter. The underwriter will market those bonds and sell them, and that's, sell them into the market, and that's how we get the proceeds. The ordinance contains covenants. The, this will be a pledge of the townships. The repayment of the bonds is supported by a pledge of the township's taxing power so that it'll use its general revenues to repay this debt on the schedule that we ultimately agreed to and pledges its taxing authority and power to do this. And also covenants that it's going to maintain the tax exemption on the bonds, meaning that these bonds are issued on a tax-exempt basis such that interest earned on those income, on the, interest earned on the investment by investors is exempt from federal income tax, and that's an important feature of this. And then also authorizes the execution of an official statement because there is a market, a public marketing of these bonds. Also it authorizes that, and then ultimately appoints the financing team and authorizes the township officials and officers to pursue the financing and execute documents. So that, that is my summary. If you would like any other information or have any questions, happy to answer them. I know it's a lot of information real fast.
Thanks, Pat. We appreciate that. Are there any, before we do make a, or call for a motion for the first consideration, is there any questions from council for Pat?
I have a question, Mr. Monero. Mr. Scott, you mentioned that some of the blanks will be filled in as we go forward. You know, the name of the underwriter, the actual schedule. Will those things require council approval each time? Will we need a motion and approval, or will this ordinance allow the, it to go forward without further public meeting and voting?
There will be one more public meeting where the ordinance will be finally adopted, and by the time we get to that meeting, which is thirty days hence, those blanks will all be filled in. So we'll know who the underwriter is, we'll know who the paying agent or the trustee will be. The, to the extent that there's any unknown, you know, that with respect to the sale of the bonds, the ordinance will authorize the township, the chair and the officials of the township to approve the bond sale on the terms that we've kind of outlined. So there's one piece, but in terms of blanks, once the ordinance is completed and passed, there would be no further public approvals needed.
Thank you.
Hey, Pat, if I can just add something. Ben Kappenstein from PFM. So on the underwriter, we have the underwriter RFP almost ready to go out. So that should go out this week. Just wanted to give an update on that. And we also have a bunch of requests out for quotes for paying agent trustee, as Pat mentioned. So we're bidding out everything for the township. I just want to give an update that that's all in process, and Karen and Tim will see the responses, and you'll all see that then.
Thank you, Ben. Any other questions from council? So this is the first consideration. So there's no action needed at this time. Is that correct, Karen?
Right.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Pat. Thanks, Ben. Appreciate it, and we look forward to continuing.
Thanks, everybody.
Joining us on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have a tax settlement for BREESA Portfolio, and that is going to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Monero. As you've indicated, this is a tax settlement between BREESA P Portfolio, PA Properties, LLC in the matter versus the Montgomery County Board of Assessment Appeals. The appellant is the property owner BREESA P Portfolio, PA Prop, LLC. The appellate is the Montgomery County Board of Assessment Appeals, and the intervenors are the Colonial School District, Montgomery County, and Plymouth Township. The property, which consists of approximately 2.297 acres, is located at 437 Erwin's Lane within Plymouth Township and is further identified as tax parcel number The property's current assessment is $5,789,500. The appeal was filed in 2018 with the Montgomery County Board of Assessment Appeals challenging that assessment beginning in tax year 2019. On or about September 28th, 2018, the Board of Assessment upheld the assessment of $5,789,500. And then this appeal was filed to the court in October of 2018. Based upon the risks and costs of litigation, the parties have decided it is in their best interest to settle this matter based upon the terms and conditions set forth in this stipulation, and that will be the recommendation that we are making to council this evening. For 2019, the assessment will be decreased from $5,789,500 to $4,581,000. For 2020, the assessment will be reduced from $5,789,500 to $4,437,000. And for tax year 2021, the assessment will be reduced from $5,789,500 to $3,986,500. The property will, the assessment will remain at that amount for subsequent tax years or until another appeal is filed. Based on this settlement, the township will owe the property owner a refund for tax years 2019 and 2020. The total for both years is five ma, five ma, excuse me, five thousand. I, Mr. Krielman just nearly passed out when I said that number. And as I've indicated, we are recommending a settlement of this tax assessment appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion from council to accept this assessment appeal?
I make the motion.
Motion from Ms. Bramblett, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Any additional comments or questions from council? Comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, moving down to police and public safety. Chief, anything additional tonight?
No, sir, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have down to Public Works and Sewer. Bramblett has been gracious enough to, one more time, read our snow announcement. It's been a busy winter for Chris and all of us crews, and hopefully the work is done, hopefully.
And we keep switching up who reads this, hoping that- And we keep switching up who reads this, hoping that it will stop snowing. So now it's my turn. It is time to stop thinking about snow. Residents are reminded that it is unlawful to park or abandon any motor vehicle. On any public street or highway in Plymouth Township. At any time within twelve hours after a snowfall of three inches or more has occurred. Where off-street parking exists. On-street parking where necessary will be permitted only on one side of the street. In even numbered years, parking will be permitted only on the even numbered side of the street. In odd number years, parking will be permitted only on the odd numbered side of the street. This will allow streets to be cleared properly. Vehicles parked otherwise will be subject to removal at the owner's expense. Any motor vehicle parked stalled incapable of moving under its own power. Or left unattended upon any public street or highway in the township. At any time within twelve hours after a snowfall of three inches or more has occurred. May be removed or towed to another location by the police department. Property owners are required to clear path on sidewalks of not less than thirty inches. Within thirty-six hours after the snow has ceased falling. In addition, residents are asked to adopt a hydrant. If there is a fire hydrant by your home, you know where it is. If obscured by snow, fire companies responding to emergencies may not. Clearing the snow will help protect you and your neighbors.
Thank you, Ms. Bramblett. And, and just, you know, to add, I know that, you know, every winter is tough and, and snow is never enjoyable, but I think this winter. As, uh, Chris could probably attest to, was particularly challenging with the amount of storms we had one after another. Uh, and how quickly some of these storms piled up and, um, you know, there's. We, we strive in this township to get our roads safe and clear as quick as possible. Um, and I think his crews are always out there doing that. And of course, that does lead to some inconvenience with. Cloud in driveways and cloud over sidewalks, um, occasional disruption in our trash service, but. Again, you know, that's, that's part of the winter and, and I think our crews do everything they can and do an outstanding job when we just always ask. Um, you know, for everyone's patience each time there is a storm and understanding that, uh, it is going to cause disruptions and. Especially when it piles up one after another, after another, there's only so many places to, uh, to put snow, but. Hopefully we'll melt the rest of it in the next couple of days and never have to see it again. Well, till next year. All right, uh, moving down to engineering, Mr. Manai, anything for engineering?
Uh, there's nothing to report tonight, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just glad to hear that you're back on the baseball field.
It's a little chilly today, but it was, uh, it was good to be out. It's good to be out. Thank you. Uh, next item going down to subdivision and land development plans that are under review. Uh, we are, uh, we have a letter here from James P. Acetelli. This is regarding eighteen seventeen Howell Road, Andrews Estates. Mr. P. Acetelli. Is hereby requesting a three months' extension for the above subdivision approval. I would make a motion that we approve this extension. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Second from a spramblyt. Uh, comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Miss Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next item under conditionally approved projects, uh, we have. A five twenty-nine Plymouth Road Traffic Impact Fee Resolution. And that one is Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Monero. Uh, be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council is hereby revise resolution. Twenty twenty-one dash oh five. To provide for the required transportation capital improvement impact fee amount. For the development at the property located at five two nine Plymouth Road being Montgomery County Tax Parcel. Number four nine dash zero zero dash zero nine three two two dash zero zero dash seven. As depicted on a plan prepared by Protract Engineering dated September twentieth, two thousand and twenty. Last revised November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty. On behalf of property owners, Al, Amir A. Pereira. And Gil Home B. Capellini collectively the owner developer. The owner developer shall pay the impact fee for transportation capital improvements under ordinance number fourteen twenty-six of two thousand and four. As amended in the amount of six thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty cents. The remainder of resolution number twenty twenty-one dash oh five. Shall remain in full force in effect duly presented and adopted by Plymouth Township Council at a public meeting. Held on the eighth day of March, two thousand and twenty-one Plymouth Township by Christopher G. Monero, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I'm moved.
Motion for Mr. Gannon, a second from Mr. Higgins. Comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Miss Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next for projects under construction, we have, uh, two items for escrow release. First one is for Bimbo Bakeries. And that goes to Mr. Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This communication is from Lonnie Manai of Woodron Associates in reference to Bimbo Bakeries. At this time, based on field observations of work completed to date, we find that sufficient work has been completed to release the amount of one million. Four hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety cents. By releasing this amount, the total account balance for the project will be reduced to one million. Five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, fifty dollars and eight cents. And I make a motion that we approve this.
And there's a motion for Mr. Gannon. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from a Spanish. Comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Miss Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Uh, next we have a waiver request of noise ordinance, and that one goes to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Monero. Uh, this agreement is entered into on this eighth day of March, two thousand and twenty-one by and between Plymouth Township. A home rule municipality of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania with an address at seven hundred Belvoir Road, Plymouth Meeting, Pennsylvania. One nine four six two and Econ Development Corporation. A Pennsylvania limited liability company with an address of one twenty Pennsylvania Avenue, Melbourne, Pennsylvania. One nine three five five. Uh, the background is that the developer is involved in construction at the site located at one one oh three. Two one 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 three Ridge Pike, Conchoak in Pennsylvania, which is within the township. The township prohibits construction work twenty-four hours a day without township permission. Uh, there is a request from the property owner to be able to work, uh, extended hours. And so if the board were to approve this agreement, that, that we, the preamble or not the preamble, the, uh. The agreement would be that in consideration of the facts set forth in the background. The parties intending to be legally bound agree as follows. That the developer shall be permitted to work seven days a week up to twenty-four hours per day. So long as the township does not receive any noise complaints. Uh, section B would states that should the township receive any noise complaints related to the construction. The township shall notify developer and developer shall only be permitted to work from seven A M. to eight P M. Uh, in witness whereof, the parties would cause this agreement to be executed. Uh, the eighth day of March, two thousand and twenty-one Plymouth Township by Christopher G. Monero, Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion to approve, uh, this waiver request?
Some of.
Uh, motion from Ms. Bramblett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Higgins. Comments or questions from council? Now, just say that this is the, uh, property on Ridge Pike where. We were told last week in our, in our workshop meeting, this is where Amazon hopes to be, uh, operating by the fall. And what we're doing here is giving them the opportunity to try to meet those deadlines with the construction. However. Um, you know, we're not, we're not waiving our ability to stop them if, uh, if there are noise complaints. We're really. Allowing them to work extended hours, but we will certainly keep on top of that. And if there are complaints. Um, you know, then, then they'll have to go back to the limits of the original ordinance. Um, any other comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Miss Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Yeah, somebody. I'm just gonna, got a late, late hand raise. We'll have to allow for that. It's the, obviously a little complicated. Uh, Mr. Kraus, I see that your hand is up. I'll let you speak before we continue with the vote.
Yeah, my apologies. I couldn't get to the, raise my hand quickly.
No problem.
Uh, just had a question about where, where is this exactly located?
So it's, uh, right on Ridge Pike, sort of right by the, uh, by the car dealerships where the, uh, where the bakery used to be.
Oh, okay, okay. So they're proposing to work twenty-four, seven, seven days a week?
Correct.
And how quickly will? I realize it's not a heavily residential area there, but, um, how quickly will noise complaints be handled?
So.
Far as shutting them down or changing their hours?
Um, I guess I would have to yield to someone else to maybe give a little. Karen, Karen, can you give a clear answer for that perhaps?
Yeah, surely. Um, yes, as soon as the township is made aware, the code enforcement officer will go down, Jim Wallace's department. And tell them that we've had a complaint and according to the agreement, they'll have to stick to the normal construction. The normal hours where construction noise is permissible, which is seven A M. to eight P M. But they are allowed to work seven days a week.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is because I know that, you know, on certain days, depending on how, what's going on atmospherically. You can hear the blue route as far as the Plymouth Country Club.
Sure.
So if they're going to be working twenty-four, seven down there, I'm thinking it might affect, it could affect a lot of residences. But as long as it's going to be handled, that was my only question, how it would be handled.
Yeah, I, the other night, uh, last week, they said they would actually work two ten hour shifts. So it would be twenty hours. I, I'm not sure which four of the day they wouldn't work, but. Probably the, the least hours of the morning, but, but that's what they told us last week.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, any additional questions? All right, let me, uh, I forget where I left off. So let me go back to, uh. Let me go back to, I know we had the motion in the second and let me just go back to the votes. Uh, Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Miss Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. All right, moving down to zoning. Okay, the zoning hearing board of Plymouth Township. The zoning hearing board of Plymouth Township hearing on March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one. Will be held at six o'clock P M. Virtually via Zoom. Log in details will be available at W W W dot Plymouth Township dot org. And the township's Facebook account prior to the hearing. The following applications will be heard. Sean and Gennaro Mitchell on an application for variances from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance. Number three four two, as amended Article six, section six oh two F and six oh two G. The variants requested are as follows. To allow forty-two point three percent impervious coverage where a maximum of thirty-five percent is allowed. To allow fifty-seven point seven percent green space where a minimum of sixty-five percent is required. The property is located at one fourteen Chantory Place in a B residential zoning district. Next is Michael Martino and Jamie Martino. On an application for a variance from Plymouth Township Zoning Ordinance, number three four two. As amended Article nineteen, section nineteen oh nine E. The variance is as follows. To allow a fence within the front yard setback. This property is located at one 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 Light Street in a D residential zoning district. Next item is William R. Wright on an application for a variance from Plymouth Township. Zoning Ordinance, number three forty-two, as amended Article nineteen, section nineteen oh eight A. The variance requested is as follows. To allow an unenclosed porch within the side yard. This property is located at seven thirty-one Rental Road in a B residential zoning district. And Adam Heffelfinger on an application for variances from Plymouth Township. Zoning Ordinance, number three four two, as amended Article eighteen, section eighteen hundred E. And Article nineteen, section nineteen oh eight one. The variances requested are as follows. To allow an eighty percent increase of a non-conforming use where a maximum of twenty-five percent is allowed. To allow a twenty-four by twenty-eight detached garage where a maximum of twenty-four by twenty-four is allowed. This property is located at fifteen seven Colwell Lane in a C residential zoning district. Uh, in addition, we will have the continuation of our hearing, of our pre-hearing. Um, and that is, uh, I think the, was that the fourth, maybe the fifth? Continuation on their, their request, uh, for apartments, um, in the mall property. Persons with a disability who wish to participate in the public hearing. And require an auxiliary aid service or other accommodation to participate in the hearing should contact Plymouth Township. At six one oh two three three oh five five four. Uh, moving on to Parks and Rec Service and Devotion Monument, Mr. Higgins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Individuals are able to purchase bricks and papers to honor a loved one who has served. Three sizes are available, four by eight, twelve by twelve and twenty-four by twenty-four. Starting at seventy-five dollars, the papers have the option for a logo at an additional charge. Available logos are Army, Navy, Air Force Marines, Coast Guard. And Plymouth Township Police, Plymouth Community Ambulance Association, Plymouth Fire Company. And Harmonville Fire Company. We are still seeking monetary donations from businesses who are interested in becoming a supporter. In return for a donation, a laser etched granite plaque. Will be displayed prominently on the three-tier donor wall. The purchase of bricks and papers is ongoing and orders will be placed several times a year. For more information and order forms, visit W W W dot Plymouth Community Center dot org. Or call the Greater Plymouth Community.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Higgins. Um, going down to miscellaneous and old business, uh, we have a couple of citizen board vacancies to announce, and I'll give that to Miss Bandish.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, all residents wishing to serve. On these citizen boards are asked to submit their resume. Or a letter stating their interest to the township manager. At seven hundred Belvoir Road, Plymouth Meeting, one nine four six two. Or via email to K Weiss, that's W E I S S at Plymouth Township dot org. The following citizen board positions are open. Three positions on the Property Maintenance Code Appeals Board. And one position on the Historical Architectural Review Board.
Thank you, Miss Bandish. Uh, is there any additional, um, audience participation for tonight? Can't wait till the day when I don't have to look for that little blue hand anymore. It's going to be nice. All right, um, seeing none, anything additional from council? All right, uh, in that case, uh, we will adjourn. Thank you.